We'll call the rule. We've got Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek is not in attendance. Uh, let the record reflect. Clerk Segras is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And no Supervisor Williams as of yet. A motion to approve the amended agenda is presented?
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries to approve the agenda. Wendy Trumbull, Director Trumbull, would you take over? Thank you.
So, our budget format this year is going to be very similar to the format we've done in the previous years. We're going to start out with the 2020 budget. It's very similar to what you've seen a year ago. I'm going to go over it very quickly. The focus of this presentation is really on the 2021 budget. Since we go out a year, however, I want to cover some of the changes that we're going to present to the Board in November for budget adoption. We'll ask the Board to approve the budget November 26th, so about four weeks from now is when we will be back asking for those amendments. So again, I'm going to go through those changes. If there's any questions in those changes, feel free to let me know. Then I'm going to talk about some of the assumptions for the 21 budget and then turn it over to the departments for their budget presentations and then I will wrap it up again at the end with the overall, what this looks like for the township. So, this first slide shows, the first column shows what we had projected to either use a fund balance, which is negative, or add to fund balance if it was a positive number. You can't hear me? Is this better? Am I on?
It was working better before.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So the first column shows what we were projecting to use of fund balance as of a year ago when we did our study session, or add to if it's a positive number. And the second column represents what we are proposing now to either use or add to fund balance. And then the last column is the change. So, in the general fund, originally, what we had talked to the Board about a year ago was that we would use about $2.4 million of fund balance. We're actually now projecting to only use about $2.2 million of fund balance. Sorry, my slide looked like it was showing something different. Only two, excuse me, $2.2 million of fund balance, so that's actually a positive change. There's a few things that happened there. The state shared revenue looks like it's going to end up better than we had initially anticipated. However, one of the other items that actually is increasing in expenses that would be different is there are a couple of new positions that we're proposing be added to the budget in 2020. HR is requesting an additional body in their department. I believe when she, when Karyn had done her study session on the HR department and talked about the hours and how much work they have incorporated into their department now with all the healthcare being self-insured and whatnot. They work numerous hours, a lot of hours, a lot of extra overtime hours in that department, so they're looking for a little bit of relief and have requested to add a position in that department. Additionally, with the roads, with all the road work that we have, with the engineering work that needs to be done with the roads, we are actually also requesting that we add a engineer position in there to help with that road project as well as a inspector position. That is going to be offset a little bit by the roads funds paying for some of it, and then their engineering department will be paying for part of that. There's one position that will go unfilled, which was a former water and sewer supervisor position that is not going to get filled, so it's a net increase of one position overall for the municipal services department. But the reason for the increased workload is because of the roads. There's a lot of work with our new roads program going on that we need the extra help. So it's really two positions that we are asking for an increase of for 2020. An HR position and a new engineer and inspector. Looking down at the fire fund, so we are projecting to actually add to fund balance in 2020 of $2.2 million. That change is because we, as we talked about at the capital improvement program, we're going to issue some debt in 2020. That is pretty much a direct result of issuing $2.5 million of debt to help pay for the fire station. Police fund is also, was projecting to use about $1 million of fund balance. Now we're at about $927,000. That change is, there's a number of changes, but the largest one is the parking lot. Any parking lot renovations would be paid for out of a capital improvement fund and we'd be issuing debt there. Community center fund was projecting to not add anything to fund balance. We have, showing that we're going to add fund balance of $371,000. That's really because we moved their capital from the community center fund into the capital improvement fund, so they're not really adding fund balance. They still have a transfer from general fund of $1 million located in that fund. We didn't reduce that yet because we're still trying to work out the details of when debt payments are going to get made. DDA, I'm skipping down a couple to the next big one. The DDA has about a $600,000 swing. That's as a result of the property tax that we talked about going down. The Western Wayne Narcotics Forfeiture Fund, that was showing a use of fund balance of $119,000. That operation is no longer in existence. We're just wrapping that up in 2019, so that will actually be zero. They will no longer be on our books as of the end of 2019. Capital Projects Roads, that is showing a use of fund balance of $1.2 million for 2020. That is because, oh, excuse me, that is actually the Ridge Road project. That's not our road fund. That is our Ridge Road where we have that fund recorded. The, it's showing a use of fund balance and it's because we transferred the money in to cover the Ridge Road for 19, but the Ridge Road project hasn't occurred yet, so we're not going to be in a deficit situation. It's just showing that we're using a little bit of fund balance there because in 19 we transferred money in from general fund to help cover that road project fund. Golf course proj, the golf course fund is the same that we talked about for the community center fund. We're transferring all that to the capital project fund and we'll adjust the transfer in from general fund accordingly. And the water and sewer fund, that's showing that we are not adding as much to the water and sewer fund for about $200,000. That's as a direct result of some bridges that we took out of the 2019 year that is going to actually occur in 2020. Otherwise, that's an overall, a quick summary of the changes from what we would have seen a year ago between then and today. Were there any questions on any of those items? Okay.
Fleet maintenance, I see.
The fleet maintenance is as a result of the capital projects fund as well. The capital improvement plan, they are actually paying for their own capital projects. That's not going into the capital project fund. The capital project, so I always show you the change between what you initially saw and the capital projects that we are going to be doing. So, everything in green is what changed. And everything in green is because we had the capital improvement program, the majority of it. So that first column, between initial and final, really the big ones that I really want to talk about are the ones in the final column that are bolded. So the Heritage Park Safety Netting is a new expense for $60,000. The preventative maintenance capital we have in here for $350,000, that's not really new. If you see the line above it for paved service maintenance for $150,000 and mechanical systems for $100,000, we changed the classification from all those individual items for just a preventative maintenance. Everything in this initial column that is gone is now in the capital project fund because we're planning on issuing debt for it, so we took it out of the community improvement fund. The preservation park pavilion, the $225,000 on there, that is going to be paid for using Wayne County Millage money. And then the fleet on there, that $78,000 is pretty close to that $90,000 that we talked about on the previous slide that Clerk Segras had asked about what the increase of that was from. As far as the next column, the computers and equipment, there's a scanner that was added for the elections for the AV counting board. We previously talked about, under finance, there's $175,000 added. We spoke about the fact that our current timekeeping system, we are going to have to update and spend some money on. We had done an RFP earlier this year and we were not happy with the results of that for 2019. We just recently reissued the RFP and results have come in, so we're anticipating the cost could be $175,000. But again, that will be brought before the Board before we make any significant purchases and a decision is made, but this is a placeholder in the event we do move forward with the timekeeping system. A couple printers in there for the treasurer, some monitors for admin. And then overall, the IT department expenses stayed relatively similar. It was kind of reallocated, but we've got some network resiliency improvement in some ser, we took away to replace some servers. And then we've got this virtual farm, which is a server hardware expansion. At the end of the day, what we are looking to potentially do is, we are identifying whether we should replace our current servers or go to the cloud. So we're investigating that at this point, but right now we have some really old servers, so something has to happen. We're either going to have to replace servers or identify going to the cloud, whichever works best. So that's what we are looking for there. And then the wireless project that we have for $40,000, that is really going to be for the summit and Village Theater now. We did the admin building this year and we're going to make some changes at the summit and Village Theater. The next page, again, the machinery and equipment. The $200,000 for the pumps for the pump station, that is moving over into the capital improvement The ADA improvements at the bottom of that first column for fleet is for $11,000 that we're not paying for using the bonded dollars. And then on the next column, the top number, the Ridge Road paving for $3.1 million. We're expecting that to happen in 2020. And then at the very bottom, before the total total, we've got the $5.8 million for the capital improvement plan. So that's what the Board would have seen when we brought this to the Board, that $5.8 million is hitting that fund there, so we didn't break out all that detail. So overall, that is a pretty big increase from what you had initially seen. Went from, you know, $2.9 million to $10.4 million. It's about a $7.45 million increase, but it's everything that we've already talked about. And then $3.1 million of that is related to Ridge Road.
Why is Ridge Road's total cost in our plan, not just the million dollars that is our portion of it?
Because the county is paying $1.9 million of that, and so we haven't received that money yet. That revenue, that $1.9 million and that of revenue and $1.9 million of their expenses will offset each other. But the $1.2 million that we transferred already over into fund balance, we're going to be using that. So it's basically going to net to zero at the end. When we get, I'll show you in a second. At the end, that fund balance should be zero at the end of 2020. Okay, so public safety changes for theirs. If you have any questions on that, Director Meyer can speak to those, but we've got some network equipment for Fire Station Two. That actually went to the Board with their Fire Station Two RBA that was talked about, so that's what the network equipment was expected to be. The ADA in the CAP plan was added to their budget as well for $63,000 and their furnishings and appliances for Fire Station Two as well came to $55,000, which was discussed with the Board already at the prior meeting. For the police fund, there's rapid DNA, equipment that is needed for $170,000, a CDR interface module that Director Meyer could speak with. There's a couple vehicles in there as well for investigative and admin vehicles, some patrol vehicles. And then their capital improvement plan, the supplemental information, that as well, we are bonding for that, and so that is going into the separate fund as well. So again, just to reiterate the capital projects, as we spoke about in September, I believe our meeting was, on that, any of the items will still be brought before the Board. That was still our roadmap of what we were planning on working on for 2020. But again, those will come back before the Board before any final decisions are made, but that is what we are planning on doing. And additionally, we are planning on issuing debt for 2020. So I'm not going to go over all of these details, the revenues and expenditures, but to show you what I was talking about here for the capital projects for the roads. If you look down here, we're expecting the fund balance of, actually, it's at $765,000. There's already some other fund balance in there, but we're expecting the revenue from the county to come in to help pay for Ridge Road of $1.9 million. Our total expenses for the project are $3.1, so we're planning on using the fund balance of $1.2, which we had already transferred in in 2019 to cover the Ridge Road costs, leaving a fund balance of $700,000 in the capital project road. That's different than the roads fund up here, which is the Millage. The Millage Road Fund is up here and that's Fund 204.
My numbers aren't balancing.
My page isn't the same.
Did you go, I flipped a couple pages.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, that explains that.
Yep. Skipped over the revenues and expenses and went right to the fund balance.
Gotcha.
So the general fund fund balance at the end of 2020 will still be at $12 million. I'm going to skip over the roads because we're planning on using everything there, but the fire fund would be about $5.7, the police would be $6.3 million, and then the community center would be at about a million, and so on and so forth going down. Now, the other thing that this doesn't include at this point in time, this is, assuming at this point in time, the 2019 fund balance comes in exactly what we budgeted, not where we're actually going to end up, but we budget this way because this is what the budgeting, how the Budgeting Act requires us to show the fund balance. If you recall, we're talking about making some large payments into MERS for 2019 still from the, using general fund, police and fire. Those have not come before the Board yet. As soon as we have wrapped up this budget, which is pretty soon, we're going to bring that before the Board next with how we're planning on dividing up those transfers into the MERS fund. So the fund balance will be less in all of these funds. We just haven't adopted the budget and made those official changes yet and requested the Board at this point. But at the end of 2020, all of the funds will be in a positive balance. And if there's any questions on that, I'm happy to go over those. So 2021 budget, I'm going to go over a couple things real quick. The property tax revenue for 2021, I had estimated the inflation factor to go up by about 1.5%. That was the historical increase since 2010, and really actually over the last 10 years, it's been about a 1.5% inflationary increase. Last week, maybe a week and a half ago, I heard from our assessors that the actual increase is 1.9 million, excuse me, 1.9, 1.9% for next year. So this inflation factor used was a little conservative. So before the Board, we asked the Board to physically adopt the budget in 2021, excuse me, in 2020 for 2021, we'll make that change. But with the new construction as well, we're anticipating the revenue to increase at about State shared revenue, obviously the state hasn't come out with what they think the sales tax collections are going to be, but we used about a 2% increase on those. And then the other revenues were based on prior year's revenues and estimations of the future permit. So obviously, we know that the construction's going to slow down in Canton, so the permit revenue, we budgeted less than what we have currently or have historically been receiving. As far as the expenditure assumptions, for the employee assumptions, we assumed a 2% full-time employee wage increase, or if it was different in a existing contract that has already been approved, we use that. Pension costs, we increased at 15%. So we received our actuarial valuation and the assumptions changed with MERS. The mortality tables have lengthened and the actual interest rates have decreased, which means our costs are going up. So we estimated at about a 15% increase for '21. In the medical and OPEB, we increased it at 10% estimated cost. And then we did include a $1 million prefunding of OPEB in the budget as well. Are there any questions with that? Okay. So those were the assumptions used. I'm going to turn it over to public safety so they can start going over theirs before I get into some of the capital and whatnot. Let them go through their budgets because they'll be able to answer some of your questions before I get into more detail. So let me pull up their presentation. And it's all, it's ready for you guys.
I have Executive Assistant Barb Crusoe. Barb is instrumental for the department in helping us manage not only our budgets, but she works with us on our forfeiture accounts. And there's really a direct link between public safety and finance on a lot of these issues, including payroll and the like, so she's here to help me answer any questions the Board may have. I have Deputy Director of the Police Department Chad Baugh and Deputy Chief Craig Wilsher. They're going to tackle some of the police information. And then I have Deputy Chief Jamie Strasner for the Fire Department. Deputy Director Stockline could not be here, he's out of town this week. A lot of the stuff that you're going to see tonight, the Board has already seen, but, so I'll be a very brief, quick overview. This just illustrates how the budget process works for public safety. As the Board knows, all of our command officers, line command officers have administrative responsibilities on top of managing their shifts, both in the police and fire department, and so they submit budget requests. Those budget requests go up through the chain of command, ultimately get approved by the Public Safety Director, then finance township supervisor, and then the township board. The next slide is illustrative of the budgeted staffing levels. This is important because as we talked about in our strategic plan, the goal for us is to evaluate staffing because of the increase in call volume that we're experiencing is to evaluate staffing on an annual basis. That will hopefully be coming later this year when we're able to get to full staffing and make that evaluation. Currently, we are down six police officers and two firefighters. The implementation of the part-time PSAs, we have all six hired and they're trained, and that is tremendously assisting our department in minimizing some of the workload in our dispatch centers for our PSSOs. The next is just, we benchmark ourselves off of other comparable agencies, and so the next just illustrates, as we continuously do, the majority of our police officers are assigned to patrol and then we do a cost per capita analysis on the police department side. The same for the Fire Department. Again, we benchmark ourselves. What's important to look at on the Fire Department side is the transport versus non-transport As always, we're looking for alternate funding sources. So on the far left, we've received over $100,000 in JAG funds. The items listed below are some of the things that we've used that grant dollars to purchase, $900-plus thousand in forfeiture, and over $1 million in AFG and UASE grant dollars. Some of the future considerations that we're looking to apply for grant funding on the police side is accident investigation equipment. Some of our equipment is showing its age and needs replacement, building renovations and a true narc system to identify narcotics in a safer manner for our police officers. And on the Fire Department, we received our cardiac monitors about seven or eight years ago under a grant. Those have about a seven-year lifespan, so they're coming up on that lifespan. We'll look to reapply for grant dollars. Our SAFER grant is good through 2021. That funds about 75% of six firefighter salaries. We just received a grant for mobile and portable radios to start replacing some of our aging. Hard to believe that some of our radios are already aging, but they are, and so we're looking to replace that, and then we'll have some money you'll see later on in the budget to replace what the grant doesn't cover, and we'll reapply for that UASE grant again this year. And then the indirect cost is a portion of our budget, so we include that in there as well. Deputy Chief Strasner.
Is that good? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. Hey. All right, so tonight we're going to go over some stuff on the Fire Department side. A lot of this, a lot of these exhibits you guys have already seen, but they're still worth mentioning to kind of show you the direction that we're headed. This first slide right here is shown in our strategic plan and it's all throughout our standard to cover with our accreditation model, and it's basically showing a GIS rendering of all three stations' response areas. And the real key to this is that it's showing that these are the drive times from each one of these stations. And if you look at the southeast corner, I think everyone here is aware that we definitely have a performance gap that we're experiencing in that lower area of the township, that southeast corner. Since January through September this year, we've had about 1,900 calls to that area, and that makes up about 20% of the call volume that is in those general areas that have that elongated response time. This next slide talks about incident calls for service, and as we've been saying and as the data continues to show us that the call volume's definitely rising, it's a projected call volume for this year of 9,071 runs, and we expect to hit that, maybe even increase that projection. The next slide should talk about mutual aid and average staffing. So mutual aid's one of the big things that we always talk about, right? We measure our mutual aid based on how many firemen we have working, and then base that on top of the run volume. You can kind of see that as the man, as the firefighter amount that we have stays the same, the mutual aid continues to kind of creep up. We're kind of projecting in 2019 that the mutual aid requests are going to come down, and that's based on the fact that the staffing level should be increasing. All right, the next slide should be on emergent response times, and this kind of goes back to the very first slide that we talked about on the time map with how long it takes us to get to some parts of the township. The fire times are generally increasing for our projections as the run volumes increase. We're still having those issues with overlapping run volume, where we're getting three and four calls at a time, and we're responding back from hospitals, we're responding from other calls. So that's kind of the things that we're currently experiencing. So although the EMS side of things has been stabilized, the fire, the fire run volume is definitely increasing and therefore so is the time taken to get on scene. All right, so the next slide should be our significant changes. And this is just a way for us to demonstrate just kind of like what things we are increasing and what things we have decreased. And one of the notable ones there is the training budget. We dropped that $10,000, but on the flip side to that, we have invested a lot of money in creating our own instructors within the department. So we have six EMS instructors right now that do all of our CE training, and we have about eight, not eight, not about, we do, we have eight fire instructors as well that do a lot of the fire training for us. And while we think it's still really important to get that outside training mindset, it's still also good to train our own people from within because as the run volume continues to increase, people are busy out on runs. It's nice to have that departmental instructor in there to catch up with these people when they come back from their runs. Let's see. The painting for interior of Fire Station One, that's a definite increase, and that hasn't been done since that fire station's been built, so that's very important to us. And then, of course, the indirect cost at the bottom and the state ambulance assessment co-op is also going to be another increase that we're going to experience. All right, on the next slide, I believe it's going to be a capital outlay. All right. So we have in the fire budget, computers, printers, tablet apparatus replacement. That really is aimed at leveraging that technology. I mean, that's all throughout our strategic plan to try and reduce our response time. I mean, that first slide talked about how long it takes us to drive from point A to point B, but we're really interested in how long dispatch takes on the phone and how long it takes the firefighters to respond when they get the call in the station, to get on the truck, to get on the air. So that's really what a lot of these computer laptops, tablet replacements are aimed at. We want that information in the truck, so when the firefighter gets the call, he gets to the truck, he doesn't have to look up anything on a map. We're way past that, which is great. I mean, that's one exciting thing that we're doing. Some of the stuff that we're doing in the buildings, and again, this all goes back to the strategic plan of developing our physical resources. And we need cabinets, counters, and floors for the training room at Station One. That hasn't been updated in quite some time, so we definitely need to expand that space and make that better. Key card access for Fire Station Three, security, very important to us. And then LED light replacement for Fire Station One, that's just going to reduce costs over the long term. Some of the machinery and equipment changes that we have, we have that hose replacement set right there from cloth to rubber. We still actually have some hose from, I won't say the early 70s because we keep that for house line and just general duties, but some of the other hose line that we have is kind of dated, and we want to be sure that we have the ability to replace that hose. So currently what we're looking at purchasing is it's a rubberized hose that has a polyester jacket on the outside, super strong, super safe, doesn't need to be hung to be dry. It's really a technological advancement that we're really excited about getting. And then, of course, the capital outlay for the vehicles. We have an '06 engine that's due to be changed out in 2021, a 2013 squad. The utility vehicle replacement is a truck that's used to pull the fire safety house, and the one that we have now is currently and the one that we have now is currently probably, I would say, my best estimate, it's a 2,000, so it's definitely dated, it needs to be replaced. And then Fire Prevention is going to get one more vehicle as well. I believe they're still driving in a Crown Vic, one of the old ones, so when you see that thing on the road, you know, you know, that's an old one. All right, and then this is just a pie chart showing basically what we're spending the budget dollars on minus the salary. And you can see that the capital purchases, which are all those vehicles, I mean, that takes up a big chunk of our budget, as does the indirect costs. But our operating expenses, though, they've been holding pretty steady at 18%. And we're trying really hard to be sure that we're spending that money effectively. All right, and then future considerations. My favorite part of all these budget presentations is to talk about all the things with you guys that we're going to need. But the automated CPR system, that was a grant try that we didn't get this year, unfortunately. But the automated CPR device is basically something that does CPR automatically, right? Continuously. And all the studies that we have, and all the information that we have says that that's the absolute best care that we can give to the residents here of the township. So we're really going to keep pressing forward on that CPR initiative. And then, as the Director mentioned, the cardiac monitors and defibrillators, those are beginning to end their lifespan, and that's one of those tools that we use on almost every call that we go on. The recruiting, hiring, and retention, this comes back to the strategic plan's goal of developing the workforce. And as the Director mentioned on the staffing study, it's hard to do a staffing study when you don't have the staff yet, because we don't know how effective they are. We assume and we think that they're going to be very effective, but we really need to get them on board. And that recruiting, hiring, retention, still an issue. We're still down two. It seems very challenging to get the firefighters here, and I don't know, just a generational or just an area thing, that we're just not getting the people in here that want to do this kind of work. Interesting. And then finally, the training coordinator position, actually, it's not finally, but the training coordinator position. Currently, a lot of the training, like I said earlier, is done on shift, and that's great, but we have one person that's in charge of it besides me who oversees it, and that's a battalion chief that's on shift. And that's a daunting task for him to do on his own. I, of course, assist with him doing that, but we really, really need that position so that they can oversee all the EMS CE's that we do. I mean, the more people we hire, the more we want to increase staffing, the more we're going to need a training coordinator to handle all of the rules and the things that we need to follow. And then finally, Fire Station 4. If we go back to that first slide, which we don't have to, you saw that yellow and red area in the southeast corner. I mean, that is really going to solve that performance gap that we have. So I know we're building Station 2, but we'll be seeing you guys probably right away after Station 2 is done, right? Shovel to shovel. All right, thank you.
One thing I want to add on the training coordinator position, something that we're watching very closely right now in Lansing is about two years ago, Public Act 291, which is the public act that governs firefighter training, was rewritten. In that rewrite, it opened up the firefighter training council to have to rewrite all the rules governing firefighter training. And if the rules pass the way that they're headed right now, it is going to add a significant liability onto the township in terms of our training and our training programs, and the amount of training that our firefighters are going to have to receive on an annual basis in order to keep up with the standard. It's going to be very similar to what we currently have with our paramedic program, where we're going to have to maintain CE's and then report those to the state in order to get recertified. Right now, once you're certified as a firefighter 2, you're certified as a firefighter 2, as long as you're working as a firefighter in the state. That won't be the same going forward, and it really adds a significant amount of training onto our command officer position. So captain and above will be required by the state now, not only by my OSHA Part 74, but were required by the state under the Firefighter Training Council Act to have a certain level of training. So something we're watching, and that will be very critical if that goes through, that somebody will have to manage that on an annual basis.
All right, for everyone's favorite, the Police Department. What you're looking at there is a report card. The next three slides are essentially line items on a report card for a police department. And what you see, some of those departments, you'll see, on the flip side, we're very low. And on the other side of things, you'll notice Dearborn and Southfield are a little high. And in part, it's geography, in part, it's about accountability and the quality of the Police Department and the service that they provide. Our functions in the Police Department, we, across our, both the investigative section and the patrol function, we look at things from the, our ability to displace, disrupt, and dismantle crime, and we're seeing our crime down about 1.3% right now for this year, and our cost for services are about, are down about 9%. But we think it's about mostly to do with where we put our people at right times in the right places. Right here, you'll see the average response time. This is where you see that 9% drop approximately. That's a projected average, or projected number for 2019. Our response time includes the time from the time you pick up the phone to the time the police officer arrives there. The response time of the police officer is still very low, but from the time they actually received the call from the dispatcher to actually go to the address, what slows that up is the triage of events. So we're not going to send, for a delayed report, we're not going to send an officer right away to that home if we have emergency runs in progress. When you have a 911 call, you'll find our response time turns incredibly fast in our agency. But you still see an uptick from 2015, so that's just something to keep in mind for the board. Our calls, receives, and prisoners' process. Keep in mind with the legislation with marijuana, we're down about 322 arrests right now with the marijuana legislation change. Our total calls are projected around about the same, maybe a slight increase, total received phone calls. And our prisoner processes, which process which account for around 322 plus another 300 or 200. So when you look at our Police Department, we're essentially pretty flat-lined when it comes for total calls that are being received and our prisoners being processed. It's cyclical, but we did have a high in 2018. So Police Budget, I'm going to turn over the Police Budget portion of this presentation to Deputy Chief Craig Wilshere, and he can explain some of the changes.
Two of them, all right. So looking at significant changes within the budget down there, CLIA accreditation, this will be actually the Director, the Deputy Director, myself have to go down. This will be our fifth award for accreditation down in Arkansas. Community promotion, we took some money away to, because they were using as much as they were. Some of the reasons for these changes are we're going along with our goals. Our goal is to increase the forensic capacity and the evidence-based technology within our organization, to make sure that our detectives and our officers are more efficient in what they do, and then again, making sure that we're giving the service to the community that we can. So looking at things like the auditor software, that's to audit our software within our organization and make sure that we're properly using it. Callia is an investigative tool to help the investigations unit push forward with investigations. Holsters, trackers, trackers are another thing we use in investigations, have been a great tool to help us minimize our amount of surveillance that we have to do. Fleet maintenance continues to go up, and then indirect costs also. I'm looking at those. Looking at capital outlays, again, we continue to follow our goals of enhancing our abilities to service the community, improving our laptops and the patrol cars. The rapid-hit DNA, that is a large item. Looking at the DNA now, we send our DNA to the Michigan State Police Lab. It usually takes anywhere from six to 18 months to get it back. Rapid DNA is an advancement that allows us to get DNA results back in 90 minutes to two hours. Currently, the capacity and the technology doesn't lend itself to purchase it now. However, next year, FBI is going to push forth the standards, and it actually will be accepted within the CODA system, which is where all DNA has to be processed through. So we're waiting on that technology to come through, and it's going to be a huge advancement and a great advantage to our investigative unit to be able to get DNA results that quickly. Looking at tasers, we continue to rotate our tasers out in order to make sure that we have the new tasers, and again, because as the older tasers get older, they start to malfunction, and we don't want that to happen. We want to continue to have the newest technology in order to ensure the safety. Patrol vehicles, we continue to rotate our patrol fleet, our patrol vehicles are usually run 24/7, so they accrue miles very, very quickly. So in order to do that, we have to ensure that we have enough new vehicles within the fleet to support it, to support our patrol functions. Looking at the non-salary fringe benefits, this is a breakdown of that. Indirect cost, operating expenses, maintenance repairs, prisoners, forfeiture capital, utilities, fleet services, liability insurance, and then transfer-out capital projects. So this is how it breaks down for the Police Department's part of the budget and non-salary fringes. And then our future considerations, these are important to us because, again, they continue to align with our goals. One of the goals is increasing our technology. Dispatch centers, dispatch centers, we've talked about many times, is out of date, needs to be upgraded. We need more stations in there, we need more techno, and again, it continues, the technology continues to grow, however, the space continues to stay exactly the same. Lobby and front desk will be part of that, again, increasing the safety for the front desk and lobby. Parking lot security, this is one of the, this is one of the issues that's been addressed and identified through CLIA and our accreditation, that the backlot needs to be secured, because that houses our communication tower. If our communication tower has issues or susceptible to, you know, people walking up to and doing things, that creates problems for the Police Department, we can't respond accordingly. Other things that we need to do, again, we've have to improve our building. The roof is in need of fixing, the HVAC, the flooring wall coverings, and then our ADA requirements. And as the Deputy Chief of the Fire Department addressed, staffing has always been a problem. Staffing is a problem. We're currently in the hiring process for law enforcement officers, and the number of applicants is nowhere near it was 10 years ago. So again, we're getting limited pools of applicants, and again, creating more issues for us to actually fill our emptying spots within the Police Department. And our span of control, we have, we've always run very lean in the Police Department in order to ensure that we have, we're budget-conscious and we're giving the police, the people the best service with the least amount of resources that we can. And then we'll continue to do our staffing study to understand, again, looking at services and things of that nature that impact our Police Department and understanding where we need to go as far as staffing goes, whether we need to increase and what the future actual holds for us.
One of the things to touch on the Police side is, in terms of the command supervision, presently, our Patrol Division, 57% of our Patrol Division has less than five years on the job. And so what we're experiencing is a shift in having to train. So they make it through the FTO, but there's still quite a bit that they need to learn, and so we're seeing the basic mistakes, and that's taxing our sergeants. So our sergeants, now the direction is that they're on the road 24/7 aiding in these calls and trying to supervise and direct, and so that's going to be something that we're going to monitor. The true favorite of the night is emergency management, contrary to what my colleague here thought. And so I want to touch a little bit on emergency management. Willie Hayes has done a fantastic job since we brought him on board in emergency management. He has jumped in with both feet, he's updated all of our plans, he's worked with the school district to address emergency management concerns, active shooter concerns, safety concerns, not only at the park, but throughout the district. He's kind of reinvigorated our CERT team, brought that back to life, working with the county, and the list just goes on. And so he's doing a really good job. 50% of his salary continues to be funded through grant dollars, and that's going to continue, we anticipate that'll continue well into the future through these budget years. The only increases we're seeing in the 2021 budget for emergency management is an increase for the NICSIL system. Historically, we've had a free use of NICSIL for alert messages. Those are for police and fire only, they're for messages that would go out if we had a train derailment, a significant hazardous materials incident, or a barricaded gunman type situation, we used it during a bank robbery. We were kind of, I wouldn't say abusing the system, but we were using it beyond what we were allowed to. So we were hitting the alert button and sending messages out that technically weren't, didn't classify as an alert message. And so NICSIL gave us a warning last year. So this now will allow us to use this Township By not only for alerts, but we'll be able to use it for community messages and also advisory messages. So if there's a water main break, we'll be able to notify our residents, and we can isolate that to a certain address area. So it's not a message that's going to go out to all Canton residents, it would only go out to those residents that are signed up for NICSIL in the area of that water main break. Last year, when we had to make adjustments to Liberty Fest and the Times due to weather, we would be able to put that out via community message on NICSIL. So it really expands the uses of what we're able to do with that system. And then the capital, this is an auxiliary communication. I'm not even going to pretend to know exactly what this is, but it's very similar to a ham radio. In the event that we had a tornado strike, we had damage to our tower, the MPSCS system went down, this would allow us communication not only with the county, but also with the State of Michigan Emergency Management Division in the event that we didn't have cell phones and there was a major catastrophe of some sort. Emergency 911 budget, as you know, the local surcharges collected come into the 911, those funds are restricted for use under the 911 system. We're estimating about $484,000 in revenue for 2021. These are increases that we're experiencing. Our annual service agreement is going to go up, that's due because of the age of the dispatch councils. Motorola portable radio annual service, that's for fixing any of the radios that break. NICE is encryption for our phone system. Text to 911, again, that's enhancing Next Gen 911. And then we have a few decreases. More additional, again, that's to replace some radio equipment that we received when we went to the 800 system, we received some radio equipment under a federal grant. Unfortunately, when we received that radio equipment, it was old equipment that is no longer serviceable through Motorola. So if a radio, I think I have about seven of those left in fire apparatus, if those radios go down, they no longer have parts, they can't fix them, they can't put them back into service, so we're looking to replace those. And again, we'll seek grant dollars. As Deputy Chief pointed out, our dispatch center is beyond what the capacity we can handle, so we're looking to get creative with some of our 911 dollars to be able to do those renovations. Currently, Canton Township is the backup to Dearborn. Dearborn's 911 system, Dearborn also, when we signed the agreement, was just with the City of Dearborn, they have since taken on the City of Westland, Inkster, Garden City, Melvindale. So they are getting about $13,0091 calls a month into that dispatch center. There's no way with our current system that we can handle that, so we have to have some conversations with Dearborn and figure this out. We're also the backup center for Metro Airport as well, in the event that their system goes down. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I've got three areas. The NICSIL, how many residents are, do you know the number of residents that are on?
I have no idea, but I can get that answer for the board.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I think it's almost eight grand.
Eight grand. Because the, for example, could, under the new agreement with NICSIL, when Lily Ridge, Lily Road Bridge opens, is that something that we can now communicate?
Yes, that would fall under an advisory message.
Perfect. That's because it's exactly the conversation that Kristin Thomas and I had this morning, was trying to figure out, nobody looks at Facebook, there is no more newspapers, they're dead.
Yeah.
People rely on texts only for communication. So we need to figure out a way to get into their phones, and that's awesome that you're doing it.
What it also does is, before, anytime we would have a tornado, severe weather, technically, that's not an alert, it's not something that we could put out, but we did it anyway. Now, with the new system, those will automatically go out, so they're tied to the National Weather Service. So if Canton becomes, comes under a tornado, a warning, severe thunderstorm warning, blizzard warning, all of that message will automatically go out as soon as the National Weather Service posts it for our area, and we no longer have to do it physically.
So are you looking to implement that before 2021?
It is implemented now.
Oh, okay.
So it's just going to be a continuation. We were able to use some funds this year with the help of Director Trumbull, use some funds this year to get it up and running. And then this is just showing that there's going to be an increase to continue that service on into the future.
Yeah, I think that's great, even with the water main breaks, to be able to just notify people within that area.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
The Manning is geared based on SEMCOG's population numbers, or are we still gearing it off 2010?
The, so on the Police side, we, in order to keep our numbers consistent, we're not using the SEMCOG population numbers, we're using the FBI, which is a mid-evaluation, because if we use the SEMCOG or we used our estimate, it then throws all of our other calculations off in terms of crime numbers. On the Fire side, we use the SEMCOG because that's what every other community is currently using when they do those population. So it's easier, because otherwise, we would have to call those municipalities and say, what's your estimated population, and we're basing it off an estimate. So we're trying to keep it as consistent as we can for now.
Heart and soul, I believe, all those three data sets, maybe not the FBI's, but the other two data sets, I think are understated.
Oh, we're very understated, yeah. Yeah, we're probably closer to 97 or maybe 98,000 residents.
And that's being also reflected in our response time, so. And that's being also reflected in our response time, so we can talk more about that going in the future. Then the last one is, I'm concerned on the liability numbers, we're running low and it's across the township, and we've got several court cases in process, right? And the outcomes of those, there's going to be a reaction from MMRA on future rates. I don't know what the timing is, how quickly, because the cases, a couple of them may take years before they're concluded, right? One or two may be done next year.
Correct, but as far as the rates go, we put the budget in for MMRA at what our costs are, we don't put in the distribution. So we should be, we should be conservative. So for instance, on the police side, the MMRA expenses, half a million dollars-ish, half, $600,000 maybe? But they typically end up getting a money back of almost half a million dollars. So I, so I think we've got, I think we're okay on the expense side, at least if our rates go up for MMRA.
And then, and there's also going to be timing, right? Because
There's timing, if we have a, if we have a large settlement that's out of pocket, we'll have to adjust to, to that when we get there. But, you know, we don't know what the future holds on a lot of items, so we'll, you know, we've got some room and fund balance if we need, if we need it.
Can you talk a little bit about the staffing study? I don't know if I was blanking when you were, when you, you brought up staffing study on two slides. What is that?
Yeah, so when we did our strategic plan, this go around, we didn't want to, so the, back up, our previous strategic plan, five years outlined staffing for each of those five years. And it was tough because there were so many changes occurring within the township. What we decided to do in this strategic plan, if we remember back to November, was we were going to do a new staffing analysis every November with a recommendation to the board during the budget time. And so last year, we made that recommendation for four additional police officers and using safer funds to hire six additional firefighters. This November, we should be coming back to you with a, with a analysis of what the impacts of that were, and if it is enough or not enough to keep up with the increase in call volume and the change in dynamics that we're experiencing. However, we can't do that because we're, we haven't been able to hire the four police officers or the six firefighters that we were granted last November. So the goal for us is, is to really wait until we have those staffing levels. Six additional firefighters will allow us to put an additional ALS unit in service 24/7 each day. Until we can get those firefighters staffed and trained, we can't put that ambulance on the road to realize, does it drop our mutual aid numbers, does it increase our ability to reduce response times, et cetera, et cetera. And so what we're looking to do is, once we get those numbers up, we will redo the staffing studies that we did last year for our strategic plan and come back to the board with findings and a recommendation.
And when are we going to get those staffing levels up?
We are working feverishly with human resources to try to get those personnel hired. We just created a new career employee development program, which is going to allow two of our internal candidates to go through the police academy, which I think is great, not only for their development, but for the township as well, because these are two solid employees in the public safety department that we've had numerous years to evaluate, and I think they're going to be, knock on wood, but I think they're going to be great police officers for us.
And that's going to get the staffing levels up for?
Well, that'll, that'll get us two, and then we'll still have four additional vacancies to fill. We have some interviews coming up. Chad's the doom and gloom, so. But we're, we're working very hard to try to get those up, we're recruiting, I've got recruiters going all the way up to the UP, trying to recruit. We're hitting any police academy, any and every police academy that we're aware of, I'm sending recruiters out. So we're, we're really hitting it hard. It's, it's, it's a
No, I appreciate that. But then I read that statement up there, the level of service provided to the community is ultimately determined by the board of trustees. And I see 10-minute response times for 20% of our calls going into the, on the fire side, going into the southeast portion of Canton Township. And I see that we've seen an increase in the response time on the police end as well. And I think to myself, okay. To be honest, it makes me feel better that we're not the only people in a drought, but whether or not Dearborn can staff their fire department and police department doesn't really affect me at all. It's whether or not Canton can. So I would really challenge the board and the administration to make sure we leave no stone unturned in trying to find a way to staff our departments and provide a level of service to the residents that they expect.
In addition to the staffing, a key component of that's going to be fire station number four in the southeast corner of Michigan Avenue, $8 million bill that we need to, if we're going to do it, we're going to figure out where the money's going to come from.
Right, but a couple of months ago, we decided to lower one of the SADs and increase another of our mileage rate. So we're not aggressively looking at ways to combat our long-term challenges. And that's something that I, again, would challenge us to do. You know, I look at, I see building renovations for fire as a potential long-term project. I see fire station number four because of the issue with service in the southeast portion as being a long-term expenditure, if you will, from police, the dispatch center, the lobby, the front desk security, the parking lot security, command supervisors from a staffing standpoint. You know, and then I see that we have 57% of the patrol people have less than five years on the job. And, and I see it too, because I swear in every firefighter and every police officer. And I'm like, oh, I'm swearing in another one, I thought we just filled this position. Well, they're off, they're gone, they've gone somewhere else. And yeah, you know, it's like, reminds me of Charlie Brown and Lucy, it's like she puts the football there, how many times is Charlie Brown going to go to kick at that football? She pulls it away every single time. So at some point, we've got to look at not running up to kick that football and, you know, are we going to change this scenario? So I think we should, I think we should start looking at it pretty aggressively.
Director, have you had to change the qualifications at all in the hiring process for either for fire or police? They've remained the same?
Yeah, we've, we've reduced, we've changed our tattoo policy in an effort, this last go around, to see if we could attract. That was, so what we've done, to put it in perspective, is we've gone to the academies and we've asked recruits, what, what are you looking for in a department? Because frankly, if we don't know what a cadet or recruit is looking for, how do we make our department attractive? And so our goal is to find those solutions without reducing our, our standards so much that it reduces the quality of the applicant. So we want to make sure that whatever we do is still reflective of the department that we, the department that we have and the service that we provide our community. So this last go around, we realized that we had some applicants, potential applicants that, that were turned away because of our, our tattoo policies. So we've reduced, we've reduced or changed that policy, reduced the standard slightly in an effort to try to attract some additional applicants. But as far as the educational requirements and the training requirements, those are all primarily set by, on the, on the police side by MCOS, that's the state standard. On the fire side, those standards are set by the firefighter, by the Public Act 291 and the paramedic requirements. What we have done is changed our recruitment and hiring practices in terms of, before you had to be a certified on the fire side, you had to be a certified firefighter, paramedic in order to turn in an application. Now we have tiers of applicant pools. So tier one applicant would be somebody who's completed all of the requirements to be a firefighter, paramedic. A tier two applicant would be an applicant that's a certified firefighter, and they're in the paramedic program with a, with a graduation date that would put it within our hiring standard. So we would be able to get that person into a background, do the things that we need to do to hire them while they were still in the paramedic program. And then a tier three applicant would be somebody who is kind of in their, in the mix of that. Maybe they have a paramedic, but they don't have their firefighter certification. And so the goal there is, is to really broaden our applicant pool and try to bring people in. And we've, our fire department is a intern site for two of the paramedic programs. And that is the sole reason we brought this change in, is because we were seeing these applicants, these, these bright students come in from paramedic program, they've got the firefighter training, they're in a paramedic program, and, and they're working side by side with our paramedics going on calls, and we're saying, hey, these are some bright kids, we should be able to hand them an application, get them over to HR while they're in our building, and, and get them on board while they're excited about being a Canton firefighter. On the police side, we've made some changes again to be able to recruit somebody who's still in the academy versus waiting until they're done with the academy. So if, if we go to school craft and somebody's in the academy there, we're able to get them into the hiring process while they're finishing the police academy. And that's, those are some of the, you know, again, some of the things we're trying in our recruitment efforts to try to broaden that applicant pool thus that we can.
A lot of the runs are to senior citizen facilities, or is there any thought to privatizing that particular phase of, of the department? Or is that not possible?
Well, I, I wouldn't say that it's not, it's not possible, anything is possible. The challenge with that is our neighbors to the north have that exact service and they're experiencing, because there is a shortage of paramedics in general in the state of Michigan, our private partners, if you will, are experiencing the same difficulties. We're actually seeing an increase in call volume to our urgent cares, our hospital facilities, Oakwood, St. Joe's, because they can't get a private ambulance to transport a patient. So for example, patient walks into, to an urgent care, they're having chest pain, the doctor evaluates that patient, they say, you need to go to a hospital cath lab, they call private ambulance, private ambulance says, hey, it could be an hour wait, could be two hour wait, they're hanging up and they're calling 911 because it's a seven to eight minute response time for our, our EMS to get there. So that adds, and, and we can post some of those numbers, Jamie watches those numbers very closely. St. Joe's right next door to us, we've seen a significant uptick in calls to St. Joe's simply because they've contacted private EMS and couldn't, couldn't find a rig available or didn't have a rig available. So there's challenges statewide, we're not alone in this. But we are, we're beating the path and getting up to Lansing, and we're trying to make the changes that we can and do what we can to try to correct the situation locally and both at a, locally and at a state level.
Thank you, and you answered a lot of my questions as well. Presentations were great. Both presentations mentioned indirect costs. I know we've talked about those before, but just as a reminder, are those chargebacks from other departments or are there other things as well?
Yeah, those are, I don't know how to explain it as well as Wendy does, but I'll give it a best shot. So the indirect costs are based off of full-time equivalent employees. No, maybe, sort of. But they're, but they go back, it's basically police and fire dollars that go back into the general fund to pay for those auxiliary services that support public safety, I guess is the best way I can explain it.
Okay, yeah. So, and it's always that, or is there anything else that it might be?
It, it basically covers items such as, you know, Dr. Meyer hit the nail on the head with it, it's the auxiliary expenses, it's the HR time, it's the payroll time, it's the supervisor's time, it's legal's time, it's various general fund expenditures that are used to help all funds, not just public safety. So these, these expenses hit water and sewer, they hit cable fund, we don't hit it to the, the summit, the community center fund, because general fund already subsidizes them, so it'd be charging them intergovernmental and then transferring them money to pay us back. So items like that, we don't charge.
Are those increasing percentage-wise?
No, as a percentage of their overall budget, those are constant. So the dollar amounts are increasing, but if you look at that as a percentage of their overall budget, it's roughly been 5% to 6% for years. When you look at grants, grants typically allow a 10% to 20% administrative charge. So when we, we do reevaluate them, we want to make sure we're not excessively charging any fund by that mean. But another piece to the, another factor of it is that water and sewer, you'll see that coming up soon, those costs have decreased because the sewer costs have come down. So their administrative charges have gone down because of that, because of their percentage of the total allocated pool has gone down, but
Affects general fund then, if that happens?
It, it does affect general fund, but it also affects the other funds that are getting those charges, because we're allocating those charges kind of based on the pool of all expenses, a full-time equivalence of whatnot. So when one pool goes down, another pool goes up, those percentages, that, that can swing, you know, the chargebacks, if you will. But if you look at it as an overall percentage of the total budget, it's been from the police and fire anywhere between, I think, 4% to 6% over the last 10 years, so it's still that percentage.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Just thinking about retention and recruitment of potential public safety staff. I know that we have the youth academy and the citizens academy. Has anyone that's gone through those programs indicated an interest in possibly a public service career? And have we, like, followed up with them on that? And I'm thinking more about the youth academy, because is there a way to get those kids that go through that program and kind of mentor them throughout their high school and as they're thinking about their career path?
Yeah, so we obviously implemented the youth academy for two reasons. One, we wanted our police officers and firefighters to interact with the community and the youth of our community, but also so that we, we saw that there was a need, we want to start getting youth interested in this career as a, or this profession as a career as an early age. And so to answer your question, yes, we've steered some kids that were in our youth police academy, our youth citizen academy, police and fire into our police explorer program. Just recently, I was, I attended the fire department open house, and there was a young man who just attended the youth academy, who would, decided to come to the open house and shadow our firefighters and walk around and help out at the, at the open house. And so he's very much interested, and he's very much interested in working here in Canton. And so he's kind of tagged on with firefighter Holloway, and firefighter Holloway's been mentoring in him and kind of helping him, steer him in that direction of what he needs for, for firefighters. So one of our PSAs, or two of our PSAs, Craig, is it one or two that came, were former explorers? So we're, our programs are working, we just need to figure out how to get more people into them and get them interested in this as a profession.
That's good.
It's been a very successful program.
Thank you.
No further questions?
Municipal Services is up next.
Good job. Greg got the short straw? Your order?
Best for last, okay.
Or, or wear everybody out. Fewer questions.
Very quickly, yes. I think so. Yeah.
All right, are we good? Okay. Good evening. Did we get the handout that I just passed out? See, Ms. Slavens is looking ahead.
Called you off of going.
So, well, thank you for having us here tonight. I had to present the 2021 budget for municipal services department. This is obviously my first budget presentation. Hopefully it's, it's everything that you are hoping it is. And we are the favorite department, unlike what Josh just said. I have with me tonight our management staff, Bill Surcek, engineering services manager, Jeff Goulet, the community planner and manager, and Brad Lear, the DPW manager, and Rob Kramer, who is not here this evening, had a medical procedure yesterday, but he was supposed to be here. This is a really high-level overview of the MSD with some of the highlights, and we can obviously dig down into the weeds as we go through the, through the presentation. Stop me at any time if you have any questions. There we go. MSD staffing. MSD staffing, Dr. Trumbull had mentioned earlier that we are looking at adding two positions to MSD. Both of those are in the engineering department. We have 73 and a half FTE within MSD, you can see the breakdown on the screen. The two increases in staffing are in the engineering department, one is an engineering supervisor and the other is an inspector. You can see there some of the justification, I worked with Corinne within HR in regards to justification for those positions. And you can see that with the 20-year road initiative, that's, we've got some longevity there and some long-term expenses. We've got $20 million worth of CIP projects, which we're intimately involved in. We did not fill the DPW superintendent position down in DPW. There's a lot of engineering that will be done for that particular department that these positions will, will pick up. And obviously we have continued business and development growth going on in the community. And working with our planning department, our building department, that's not looking like it's going to slow down terribly much. So we still have to maintain the level of service that we're giving today. And then obviously some succession planning. When we sat down and looked at the engineering department and looked six, seven years down the road. We, we want to make sure that we can build in some internal knowledge and, and feed off the people that have been here a while, the employees that have been here a while. So that's the justification for the two employee changes. They are being recommended to take effect in 2020. But this is the first time that we've been able to talk about them in front of you as a board. So this 2021 budget is actually, they're written into the 2020 changes. And this will just be a continuation from the, from the changes that we're proposing. As far as our budget breakdown, the total MSD budget is a little over $54 million. And you can see that I've broken it down by department. I did not break out, I know that we just got done discussing indirect costs, I did not break that out. That's always been something I've just seen that's been absorbed in departments where I've been from in the past. But that's something I could definitely break out if needed to be. But you can see that general fund makes up, well, you can't see, but if you combine some of the departments up there, general fund is actually only 10% of MSD's overall budget. Everything else is taken up by an enterprise fund. So here we go into some of the highlights and forecasts amongst all four divisions. Building and development activity is projected to stay flat from 2020 and 2021. Permit and building activity, the same, that includes your rental inspections and registrations. The sanitation fee, we're looking at a 3% contractual increase. And suggesting that the solid waste collection fee to the residents, to the users, and say at $155 per year. Engineering, we will be introducing a light pole maintenance program. Every other year now, they do budget dollars to inspect the mast arms. If you drive some of the, this is not count the DDA, the DDA is responsible for their own light poles. And they actually just went through a process, I believe it was this year, and they painted the green poles. This will come into effect and everything else that's outside the DDA, which is a decorative light pole. We will institute a program to paint and, and repair those poles as well, over and above the mast arms. And obviously the continuation of the sidewalk repair and the gap program will continue. In 2021, we will be in zone six, which is from Michigan Avenue to Ford Road and from back to Canton Center. In the public works, we will be continuing in 2020, we're going to be introducing the cross connection program. Which from what I've been told, we have had a study session on, there's been some information discussed about that previously. In 2021, obviously that's going to continue, but that'll be a pretty big undertaking in the DPW department, starting here next summer and then continuing forward. And also water main replacement valve and valve upgrades, which that falls under capital and we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. I've got a slide just on capital. And then in the planning department, there'll be a complete review and update of the township zoning code. That's also written into this budget. Any questions so far on, that's kind of the high level overview for the departments. I have not talked about roads or capital yet, and I wanted to kind of just take a break. Because I know that there's going to be some questions on those.
Not a budget related, but operational from today. We had a couple of water main breaks, they've been repaired. Okay, do we have to do a boil water or no? Beautiful, thank you.
Yep, and we will work with, with Mr. Meyer on the NICSIL process. And get, get, get that situated so that our DPW department, our water department will be able to send out those notifications.
That's awesome.
There was an increase to the sidewalk repair and gap program that's going to be maintained at the current level?
Yes, the level, I believe it was 250, 250 and 250, so the total of $500,000. That level has been maintained for 2021.
Do you know if the DDA is going to keep the same amount of lights in the district post Boulevard?
That will be determined after the design and scope of the Boulevard, right?
They're leaning towards fewer.
Yes.
The zoning code update, is there a board role in that, or is that all department?
I'll let Josh speak to that. If the last. It's basically in 1990. So we've done a lot of improvements and a lot of changes and amendments to the codes since then. But we're kind of behind the power curve and some of the state law changes that we need to kind of do some updates. So what we probably will expect, we don't know whether Patrick and I can take care of this internally and get the planning commission involved. But yeah, it's an ordinance amendment, so at some point in time, you know, we'll have to have a study session to go over the overall changes if there's any dramatic changes. So those are the things that we'll highlight. And then we'll have to go through the normal ordinance amendment procedure to update and adopt a new zoning code and zoning map. So that'll be a big undertaking, it'll probably be a two-year project. So we're trying to finish up the transportation element to the master plan as an update to the master plan here in the next six months. That'll be the next thing that you'll see before you get, we get into the zoning code update. Okay. Roads. Obviously this is going to be a topic moving forward for the next 19 years or so. This is the first, I think, official year where we've had a very robust road, road projects that we're undertaking with the village. I know we're here to talk about 2021, but we really haven't had a chance since engineering got together with the outside engineering firms. And discussed, and also the county, and looked at our road projects. This is the first look at what we're looking at for 2020 and 2021. And I will show you a map that compares our projects and overlays it with the county's perspective projects in a few minutes as well. But I just wanted to go through these as our village road projects that are unmatched along major roads. And I don't know if you want me to read each one of them or if you guys are good, just kind of looking at the screen. I did, it is included in your handout as well. Just to reiterate, primary roads are 55% of the village funds are going to these projects here. 30% are going to the subdivision roads, which are the 29 projects we've already discussed and approved. And they are in the works, and then 15% goes to the state roads. So these are proposed. Canton and Wayne County are preparing to spend over $20 million between 2020 and 2021 in the roads. Which I think is a significant investment in our road infrastructure. That's from new construct to pavement preservation to the subdivision. So there's, there's a lot of dollars that are being put into our, our roads over the course of the next two years. Obviously we'll be bidding these out in this winter. And I really have to emphasize the very last sentence on here, that we will not be announcing these projects. Until those bids come back and are reviewed, because word on the street is that road projects are definitely coming in higher than what's estimated. So we did, we were conservative with these, with these dollars. But this is for planning purposes only and looking at a lot of different. We looked at traffic counts, we looked at PAA's rating, we looked at the county projects. So that we could coordinate what is best for the township over the course of the next two years. We did, like I said, engineering met with the engineering firms, they met with the county. We did meet with the external road advisory board or council and, and discussed these as well in that meeting. So, but I just, we won't be announcing anything until those bids come back. Because we don't want to give any miscommunication or get the hopes up of some of the residents that may think their road's going to get done or a road's going to get done and then it doesn't. So this is your map for 2020 that shows the, the projects that were on the previous page, which are on Canton Center. Haggerty in a couple of different locations, Sheldon Road from Yost to Michigan, the Ridge Road project. And then the county projects, which are Cherry Hill from Canton Center to Lily. Beck Road from Ford Road to Warren, Sheldon Road from Ford Road to Warren. So those are some pretty aggressive road projects and you can see that they're spread out throughout the township. In that there is strategy behind that, just so that we are not stumbling over each other. We're going to have, you know, a lot of construction going on. And this is just your major road projects, this is not the 29 subdivision projects. Nor the catch basin improvement projects within the subdivision. So once we get everything approved, we will have a much more robust map that'll have all of that overlaid. And you will see how busy we actually will be. So that is for 2020. This is 2021. The biggest difference for 2020, or for 2021 is there are no county projects on here because they do not plan that way. And I need to make a caveat, and Bill can attest to this too. Going back to 2020, their projects on Cherry Hill, Beck Road and Sheldon Road, those were told to us at a meeting. It's very tentative as well, but we won't be announcing those either until we get the confirmation from the county. That that is where they're going and that they're actually bid. I think we all remember we dealt with that a little earlier in 2019. Other 21 road projects, well, obviously continue with the match projects, which are in the subdivisions and the HOAs. The 29 that were already approved and that have already been, they're working on the design process now. The preventative maintenance, which is the catch basin repairs and improvements. And that's all per the road village that was approved in 2019. And then here again are those Wayne County projects that are tentative, that we won't be communicating until we get confirmation back from the county that they are actually moving forward with those. But for planning purposes, it was really important for us to sit down and work with them on what their potential projects are so that we could make sure that we're doing the right projects. So Bill, do you have anything else to add about the roads? So that, that was really fast, but that was, that was the road piece of it for the next couple of years. I can go back, any slides that you'd like and answer any questions at this time in regards to the roads if we want.
I just, 2019, were you pleased with everything that we were in control of and how your contractors worked?
We were, we were very pleased with getting all the work done and the board school started. We only did a very small additional. And we were satisfied with the work of the contractors. We only did probably half of the work. Although we had a lot of projects.
You have some lessons learned or anything you would change, or, not that I have to know.
More staffing.
Yeah?
Yeah. I think Kate and I have talked a bit, you know, with the additional engineer, additional inspector. We do intend over the next several years to start to transition to that work. Still have consultants, but that's a big overall.
Yeah, that was, that was a kind of an eye opener this year, and I forgot to mention that on my slide. But we did have one of the contractors that we worked with and we worked with, I believe it was three members of that, that entity that both, they all left. The, the company we're working with. So we need to build in some consistency as we move forward. Because luckily, we've inherited somebody that's very knowledgeable with roads and is picked up very quickly. But we definitely don't want to get ourselves in a position where we're counting on a, on one of our outside engineering firms. And they can't come through and then we've got egg on our face.
I know that we're having the quarterly meeting with Wayne County in January. Do we expect to have confirmation on the 2020 projects by that meeting or around that time?
I.
Don't know.
I would hope so, and here's why I say that. And I may be a little naive, I'm getting a smirk from Pat, but their budget was just approved in October. So, so they already have their fiscal year budget approved for next year, so I'll be pushing hard to get that answer. Because we have to be able to plan. I mean, we're, we're planning two years out, so that it's my goal, and I think I said it in our meeting too. It's my goal to get Wayne County to, to be a little more proactive. If that's possible.
And so this isn't part of this conversation, but I just wondered if there was an update on the MDOT conversations on Ford Road. How's that progressing?
So we have a, we haven't had any more meetings on it. There is the, the work session on December 11th, which we put an invitation out there, I believe, for a meeting. MDOT's going to host a meeting here with the DDA board and all of you as well to answer any questions. And then from that, answer any questions and go back and put together the scope.
And we still are going to have the follow-up meeting with Wayne County and MDOT next couple of days.
Monday.
Monday?
Yes. Oh, that's just with the county, that's to get, to try to get some money.
Well, that's Haggerty Road pieces, we need to know that they're on board and committed.
Thank you.
One thing we had talked about was potentially pursuing a, much like the Ridge Road project, a county, Canton. Yeah, combined project. Have we had those kind of discussions with the county, maybe in relation to 2020 or future years? I know when we had the intersection improvement program, we were looking at Palmer and Sheldon, right? It's that blinking red light, there's the drain that would need to be enclosed, obviously it would need a new traffic light. Would that be something that we would want to start having a conversation with the county about? To put it on their radar if it's not?
We actually already have. At the last meeting, we did talk about that specific intersection, we also talked about, you're going to have to help me with the roads, Ridge.
Denton Ridge.
Denton Salt.
Oh, yeah.
So we did talk about some collaborative projects like that with some rough, rough estimates and what we would need to do to move forward on some of those. So those, I think the conversations have started, we just have to continue them and look for those joint projects that make sense.
Wayne County on the, because they are very expensive projects, they both cases kind of backpedaled on the money side. So it's early in the conversations.
And if you're going to enclose a drain, you're probably going to have to start talking environmental quality or. We found that out. Okay.
Seeing no further questions?
Okay, great.
Well done.
All right.
A few more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I can, I can be done.
Okay, no, 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 keep going, keep going.
All right, actually this is the, this is the quick part here. So the capital improvement projects for 2021 that were already approved by the board last month, those are listed up here. The top two, the overhead door and the floor repairs are at Fleet Building. Everything else is down at the DPW building that includes the outside painting of the building, door replacements, fire system upgrades, and then exterior signage. So that's, that's the other capital projects that we're working on internally. The other capital that we have that's not part of the project is our fleet. 75% of our fleet is new within the last 10 years. The strategy obviously now is to properly prevent, or do some preventative maintenance and warranty work on those. I'm very proud of the fleet that we have, Canton should be proud of the fleet that we have. It's, it's, it really does make the township look great when you're out there compared to other communities. We do have two replacement vehicles that are in the budget for 2021. And then the other is our continued water main replacement. Approximately, we approximately replace one mile of water main on annual basis. And although we don't know where it'll be in 21, it is in the budget to continue with this, with this capital improvement. And with that, just wanted to show you a little bit of MSD and how hard we do work throughout the community, I mean, in all kinds of areas. And you can see in the bottom middle, that's the newest member of MSD family. MSD here is to support, maintain the safety and quality of life for our residents, businesses and visitors. And I think all the employees, I've learned really quickly, take that serious. So. So, with that, we'll take any other further questions.
Very well done. What's the puppy's name?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing? December 11th meeting is, I think I made this room, state, salted the Boulevard, the DDA, and they were all supporting the license. We did get a series of questions from the DDA, and I would encourage the board to please send your questions and write them down. I will tell you, I'm quite certain that the state and their consultant will not want to answer questions they have not received. They, they, they don't want to do a Q and A session, they really want to prepare. It's a $45 million project, and the DDA has a lot of good questions, and I'm sure you guys will too, so, you know, I just, I'm a month away, but.
I'll send out an email, reminding everybody with the date and the time. I thought there was an invitation, it already went out, but I, but I will double check. Actually, I'll do it tonight.
And I would also like to invite the roads folks as well to that meeting.
Sure, okay.
So December 11th, you locked in with Amy, and she's locked in with.
What time is that?
It's in the afternoon.
I believe it's at 1:30.
Okay.
Okay, so during the day, that makes it a little bit easier. Okay.
All right.
Being that Anne Marie is current, is not here, I will ask the question, I know she would ask if she were here, the two replacement vehicles in 2021, are we pursuing grants for those by any chance?
Once we determine the vehicles, if there's a grant available, yes.
All right.
No further questions? Thank you, guys, well done.
Thank you.
Brad's up next?
Yep, Leisure Services is next.
Somebody else has a head of himself.
Who's left?
Puppy to be named. Puppy with no name. You knew him right away like a kid? A lot easier to ask questions.
Okay, are we ready to fire up for Leisure Services? Truly your favorite department. I get to say that last, because now they don't get to trump me. Well, yeah, dang it. She's going to say that she's your favorite, but we know she's not.
No favorites.
So, with me here tonight, we have several folks that help make Leisure Service run every day, to help serve the community as best that we can. We have Jeanette Ilo, our business supervisor, who has done a fantastic job of helping pull all these numbers and the presentation together. John LaFever, our deputy director, who runs kind of all the operations for us. Brad Sharp, our facility services manager, who really helps with all of our projects, a lot of the CIP projects that we're going to be tackling over the next four or five years. He's going to be taking the lead on many of those. And then additionally, we have Peg Stevens and Dave Harris and his cable studio, who really helped us put this presentation together for you tonight. We're going to try something a little bit different, and instead of exciting PowerPoint slides for you tonight, we are going to start with an exciting video for you this evening. So with that, go ahead and get us started.
Canton Leisure Services has long been recognized as one of the leaders in parks and recreation in the nation. Since 2004, Leisure Services has been accredited by the Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies, making it the longest standing nationally accredited parks and recreation agency in the state of Michigan, and one of 178 accredited agencies in the United States. To reach this professional milestone, Leisure Services continues its tradition of providing exceptional facilities, programs, and services that enhance quality of life within our vibrant community. In order for Leisure Services to succeed in meeting the needs of Canton residents, the department takes a multifaceted approach to identifying trends and challenges that affect our community. Staff proactively responds to these needs in an effort to define a clear and unified focus and direction that is used to shape all current and future programs and services. To do so, the department uses specific means and measurements by continually reviewing national standards to ensure that Leisure Services consistently maintains a high level of successful delivery of services. Frequent review of these statistics illustrates that Leisure Services regularly exceeds the national standards of best practices. One example is the cost recovery model, which compares revenues to expenditures. The current National Parks and Recreation Cost Recovery Average is 29%, while the best practice of gold medal agencies' cost recovery average is 35%. In comparison in 2018, Canton Leisure Services maintained a 52% cost recovery average. To enhance revenue, Leisure Services actively solicits alternate funding opportunities, including sponsorships, donations, as well as a variety of grants each year, which are used to offset the cost of providing programs, implementing capital projects, and expanding programs and services. 2019 was a great year for Leisure Services. We've continued our goal of fostering a healthy community. This has been accomplished by educating and encouraging community members to be active and maintain healthy lifestyles. In Canton's most recent community survey completed in 2014, 91% of households indicated that they had visited a leisure service park or facility during the past year, which is significantly higher than the national benchmark average of 72%. The most frequently mentioned Canton facility was the Summit on the Park. The Summit's Fitness Center currently provides over 6,000 members access to state-of-the-art fitness equipment, as well as fitness classes and additional resources to improve health and wellness. In addition, the Summit on the Park remains a popular community destination that attracts more than 600,000 visitors each year. The Summit's new personal care pantry, which is stocked by donations from the community, also helps meet the needs of residents who utilize the emergency food assistance program by providing them access to important personal care items such as toiletries, adult diapers, or other non-food items not covered by supplemental nutrition assistance programs. The Block Youth and Teen Centers After School Outreach Program, known as Canton Youth Connection, completed its first year of 23 weeks of swim lessons to participants. These free lessons, which are held at the Summit on the Park, were originally started with CDBG funds for at-risk participants and included all of the equipment as well as instruction. Prior to these lessons, 83% of participants had never previously had a swim lesson. After participating, 100% of the participants improved in five different skill areas. Each year, Leisure Services therapeutic recreation programs offer more than 100 hours of individuals with disabilities to remain healthy and physically active through adaptive fitness classes. Additionally, the program offers opportunities to build important interpersonal and life skills, from grocery shopping, to dining out, from cooking for themselves, to mailing letters at the post office. While these program participants of all ages spend time at these adaptive camps and classes, family members are offered equally important opportunities for respite. Leisure Services also continues to focus on connecting community. Canton Leisure Services' commitment to all members of our community has never been stronger. "You belong here" is not only a current marketing campaign, but is also the driving force behind our policy, planning, vision, programming, and public outreach. Diverse holiday celebrations, cultural representation, and recognition are met with gratitude and appreciation at programs, in facilities, and on social media. Recent cross-cultural events included the Canton Culture and Cuisine Tours, which enabled participants to visit and learn about a variety of different houses of worship in the Canton community, all while sampling a variety of cultural dishes. In addition, the resident-driven Leisure Services Inclusion Task Force was developed to gain insight and feedback into serving the diverse needs of our community. Moving forward, Leisure Services remains committed to continuing these important access and inclusion initiatives. In 2019, Canton Leisure Services became the first sensory-inclusive certified parks and recreation department in the nation endorsed by Culture City, a leading nonprofit organization that is committed to creating more inclusive communities nationwide. This certification requires that sensory-inclusive accommodations are implemented at facilities, programs, and special events to ensure that spaces and equipment are available for individuals with sensory processing considerations. Another way that Leisure Services helps to connect our community is by providing 15 miles of trails for walking, biking, and jogging, and in winter months, cross-country skiing. Leisure Services is currently working with the Municipal Services Department on expanding and enhancing the Lower Rouge Trail crossings. Specifically, the Trail Access Point located at Sheldon and Lott's Road will be getting additional upgrades to improve visibility and safety, with work continuing into 2020. Canton Mobility Transportation Service continues to successfully partner with Nankin Transit Commission Services to offer transportation not only in Canton, but also to Wayne, Westland, Garden City, and Inkster. Canton residents who are eligible to use Canton Mobility Transportation include individuals who are 55 years of age and older, those who are temporarily or permanently disabled, as well as those who qualify for Social Security. This provides a better individualized service for residents at a much more affordable rate than opting in to the Smart Bus service. Leisure Services also continues to focus on creating a vibrant community. The Leisure Service vision of creating great experiences is based on the belief that through great leisure programs, facilities, and open spaces, vibrant and dynamic communities are created and enhanced for current and future generations to take advantage of. This is accomplished through continual evaluation of current programs and offerings. As a result, staff identified a need to rebrand, expand, and revitalize several initiatives this year. As a result of innovative programming and marketing changes to Canton's Thursday Night Live Concert Series, average weekly attendance more than doubled for all seven free outdoor concerts that are held in Heritage Park. Staff enhanced the concert experience by adding a variety of food trucks, family-friendly activities, in addition to a monitored beer and wine garden. Canton's 2019 Liberty Fest was met with some difficult weather challenges for the first time in a number of years. Leisure Services worked closely with other township departments to make some significant changes to the festival's layout. In addition, nearly insurmountable weather-related obstacles had to be met with creative solutions. In spite of the stormy weather, Friday saw one of the festival's largest crowds to date. The 28th anniversary of this festival was truly a testament of success that is possible when Canton Township Departments demonstrate such an outstanding commitment to teamwork. Pheasant Run Golf Club continues to increase league opportunities and youth play by offering several programs to expose golf to a variety of prospective new players. Canton's golf professionals have made a concerted effort to grow the game of golf by promoting opportunities to women and children by providing instruction in a non-competitive, small group setting, such as the Get Golf Ready program. All these unique features help to attract new golfers and will help keep them coming back each season. Leisure Services also continues to focus on preserving our resources. Environmental stewardship is at the forefront of every park design in Canton. Leisure Services is currently working to finalize plans for Copper Park, a new neighborhood park which will be located near I-275 and Copernick Road. This half-acre space will provide a new community park to serve residents in the northeast area of Canton. Environmental sustainable practices and strategies are implemented to improve parks and golf courses. Pond management continues to be a high priority area, since ponds are vital to wildlife in our parks, as well as stormwater runoff, and for irrigation on our golf courses. This past year, pond aerators were installed near Pheasant Run Golf Course as part of a pilot project in an effort to combat algae growth without the use of chemicals. Based on successful results, the program will be continued and expanded in 2020. Additional environmental practices are currently being implemented in response to the assault on wetlands by Fragmites, an invasive plant that has had a massive impact on the ecological health of Michigan's wetlands. Staff has developed a management plan that will help prevent, detect, and eradicate this aggressive species. If left untreated, this wetland grass will continue to grow and crowd out all other plants, as well as eliminate natural feeding grounds for fish and waterfowl. The Parks Golf and Facility Maintenance Staff have been working hard to maintain and improve our facilities and spaces. LED lighting has been installed by Leisure Services staff in many township facilities with significant cost savings by keeping these types of projects in-house. As Leisure Services continues to proactively meet the changing needs and desires of Canton residents, it is important to regularly focus on planning and projects for the future. This can only be accomplished with the strategic planning that effectively and efficiently utilizes our resources to achieve these crucial initiatives. Future projects will include Community Needs and Assessment in the Master Plan, Preservation Park Pavilion Installation, Canton Sports Center Facility Enhancements, Develop of Tree Management Program. Leisure Services is currently in the process of distributing a five-year Community Needs Assessment Survey. This will provide valuable information to guide the future updates to the five-year master plan that will focus heavily on Heritage Park. In 2020, Canton is proposing to use its dedicated Wayne County Parks Fund to install a pavilion at Preservation Park as identified in the Park Master Plan, which will include covered, multi-use space, and permanent restrooms. The Canton Sports Center continues to receive enormous positive feedback about its recent field renovations. In 2020, a field groomer has proposed for purchase to maintain these fields to their new standards. In an effort to continue improving all player and spectator experiences, staff will apply for grants to fund additional facility enhancements, including dugout improvements and other updates to current Victory Park amenities. In 2020, Leisure Services is proposing that a tree management program be developed to provide the data and analysis needed to determine necessary cost-effective levels of funding for tree maintenance and tree planting over the next several years.
All right, so with that, that is just kind of a overview of everything that we do and what we do with the funds that we're requesting, and some, a little bit more graphic detail about some of the projects that we're proposing for the future that will really have an impact on the community. Just a couple of quick slides on some of the details behind all that information. Wendy did talk about the $350,000 that is in addition to the CIP, that is the preventative maintenance items in here. So that's for non-reparable paved surfaces, roof systems, mechanical, et cetera, that we'll use for those types of projects. Additionally, in 2020, we have, as Wendy talked about, these are the items that she talked about, that are in addition to the CIP, as well as vehicles that we have planned for replacement. The front door here for $10,000, I don't know if you've noticed, there's been several times over the past year where that door has been inoperable, and we've had to send folks in to address that. A facility services vehicle and a couple of parks vehicles are, are proposed in here. Heritage Park Ball Field Safety Netting, so this is actually for, in the back of the park here, where we're currently constructing a fourth ball field back there using Wayne County Parks dollars, so this will help keep the spectator areas safer for foul balls and fly balls, those types of things. The field groomer, to keep the fields out at the sports center in tip-top shape, we talked about that a little bit in the video. The cable center is, cable department is adding some new cameras, or replacing some cameras out there. And then we also have in both years Summit Fitness Equipment, so those are lease payments that we have for continual replacement. We don't replace all the equipment every year, it's on a three-year cycle for different pieces of equipment. So basically, we keep the equipment as long as the warranty is still active on that equipment, and then recycle it out so that we don't have excessive downtime, and then we're also able to keep the most modern equipment in there to keep our summit members coming back over and over. And then the Preservation Park Pavilion that Director Trumbull talked about a little bit in there, we also have that. That'll be funded with Wayne County Parks Village dollars. 2021, Sports Center dug, dugout retrofit, warm-up space, a few other items to really maintain and attract tournaments and leagues out there. That's going to be partially offset with grant dollars. We're going to pursue several different grants to help offset that, so we're budgeting here. The Township Match portion, if we don't get grant dollars, then we wouldn't spend these dollars here. Cable editing computer, and then a Pheasant Run vehicle in 2021. Then this is a, just brief overview of the general fund dollars that we're requesting for 2020 and 2021. Overall, at the bottom, you'll notice the delta for 2020 is about $130,000, and 2021, $91,000 there. So, we're actually reducing a little bit each year for those different budgets to, to try and be as responsible as we can. be as responsible as we can and strategic as we possibly can here. The Community Center Fund, this is just a general overview here. Again, you'll see that we're reducing primarily, the biggest piece of that is removing some of the, you'll notice in 2021, the debt service falls off, so that's fantastic. And then also some of the CIP projects that are being pulled out that we addressed earlier in the budget or in our discussion this evening. Fellows Creek and Pheasant Run Golf Course, similar story across these budgets here. Both have been fairly successful in doing our best to offset and cover operating expenses with our revenue. We don't budget extremely aggressively here. Our hopes are like in 2018, we were able to cover almost, for Pheasant Run, they actually covered all of operating expenses. Pheasant, or Fellows Creek had a slight subsidy around $30,000 or $40,000 for the operating expenses. So if we have good weather and a successful year, then these numbers would be, we would probably offset all of our operating expenses, but we don't want to get too aggressive with our projections on that because if we, the weather doesn't always cooperate with us as we saw with Liberty Fest this year. And in, this is our cable TV and community improvement. The community improvement is basically the $350,000 that we talked about earlier for preventative maintenance capital items. And last, I did want to, I would be remiss if I didn't touch on, I don't have a slide here, but we talked about staffing discussions previously with Director Meyer, where, you know, in Leisure Services, we're also experienced similar issues, slightly different in that it's a part-time staffing issue, but we are experiencing similar issues with staffing constraints in there. We have about 300 part-time employees that work for our department, which is about 80% of our workforce for Leisure Services, so we're very heavily dependent on our part-time workforce. We had this past summer over 30 positions that went unfilled for our department and currently, you'll, there'll start being marketing information coming out that in, starting November 1st, there will be pool closures Monday through Friday from 1:00 to 4:30 PM due to staffing issues that currently, we're down about 20 lifeguards from our ideal number, so that's almost 50% of our staff. So we are unable to, we've had full-time staff that are covering part-time positions back there, but even with that, we're not going to be able to keep those, keep the pool open all the time. So we're hoping, we're doing some aggressive marketing, trying to get out there and change tactics as much as we can, but that's not unique to public safety. We're also facing those issues as well. So with that, be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Can you go back a slide, please?
Sure.
Okay, cable fund balance cannot be used for operating expenses? It has to be all capital expenditure?
A portion of cable's fund balance can be used for operating. We transfer annually about $800,000 from the cable for the franchise fee revenue. The peg fees have to be spent on capital, cable, capital equipment, so I could get you the amount, I don't have it offhand of what the fund balance is that can be utilized, but a portion of it can be used for operating.
Okay. And then, I didn't see in the listed items, the, either the projection or the screen at the theater, that's still being chased, right?
Correct, we're still, we're still evaluating. RFP results we got back, we weren't pleased with, so we are going to be requesting new proposals from folks, but when we bring that to the board, we'll do a budget amendment at that time.
And it'll be tied to the cable?
Correct.
Fund balances. The, can we add to the one-on-one discussions, just like Josh does on terms of staffing? Because I'd like to know with actual numbers below budgeted, so if you mentioned 30, that's the first time I've actually heard that actual number. So if we could talk about that once a week with where we're at, I'd appreciate that. Something else, but I lost it. So, any other questions?
Oh, it was very informative.
Very thorough, well done.
Thank you. Little change of pace after a long night.
It seems to me, though, that to be fair, we should rotate the responsibility for the cable TV by department every year so they can have fancy videos.
I did offer to all the other departments to utilize the cable department for this.
Oh, did, okay.
About a half hour ago.
Never mind then, I thought my idea was good, but...
Maybe next year we'll see more videos, potentially.
A drone shot of Pheasant Run was beautiful. Oh, man, that looked lovely.
Great, yeah.
Dave Hare is in that drone.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Well done, guys, thank you. Take us home?
I'm taking you home. The actual favorite department is going to finish up this presentation because you save the best for last, right? So I know we've spent a lot of time hearing from all the departments, so I'm really going to try to wrap this up relatively quickly now that we're at the tail end of it. The only departments I really haven't covered are the Finance, IT, Clerks, Treasurer, and Supervisors Departments. The staffing level's staying consistent in all those departments, no unusual additional capital items, pretty, everything's pretty much status quo in all those areas. I will touch on this capital for 2021 that has not been covered yet. If you look at the clerks, there's just a new computer and a monitor that is in the budget for 2021. And when you look at the IT department, we've got $15,000 of contingency for, we don't know what equipment's going to break, IT, but we want a little bit of cushion room. We've got replacement computers, if you recall, last year, this was the first year we actually are doing a regular rotation of computers. We were making our computers and kind of band-aiding them along for a long period of time, and instead of doing that now, we want them on a regular rotation, so we're trying to get regular computers replaced on a four-year rotation at the latest, depending on the usage of them. So this is just the regular replacement of annual, that we're going to be doing annually. We also have some laptops for the EOC to replace, some monitors. What this monitors means for replacements, a lot of the monitors that we have are old, so, and they're smaller, so we're trying to get the staff the larger screens that a lot of departments are now using. IT has also taken on replacing all of the RICO's township-wide previous, RICO's are the copier scanners, equipment that we have. Each department was kind of on their own for replacing those, but IT is taking on that task now, identifying when there's good deals, trying to get a better price if we buy them in bulk. And also, it tends to, on these scanners, as they age, the maintenance costs of those go up, where if we replace them, the maintenance cost is down, they usually will pay for themselves typically in about four to five years when we replace them instead of holding on to them for a long time, and we get a better quality. So IT is taking over that. And then, again, addressing the future upgrade to the admin firewalls if we need those, or whatever cloud-based servers we might be switching to in the future for IT.
Can we, on that?
Sure.
Briefly, I just want to say, at some point, I would like to have a discussion about that because, when we, especially when we talk about, about cost, because if we're going to, probably we all should have a conversation, if we're going to be going to electronic document storage, that would be something to factor in with regards to the server, cloud, what the cost would be.
Correct, correct. We will, from an IT perspective, we are likely going to be bringing before the board for 2020, we're just in early conversations with my staff about it, hiring a consultant to come help us with some of those discussion items and considerations for internal, external storage, servers, whether we want to go on the cloud or whether we want to keep it internal. People who actually, you know, the cloud is new to the township, a new concept to the township, there's many factors to consider. Public safety, for instance, there's a lot of information that they can't necessarily go out to cloud because they have securis requirements, certain legal requirements of security that they have to have. So there's certain items that we're going to have to potentially keep some things in-house versus the cloud. So we might, it might behoove us to have a expert who is familiar with the cloud versus internal storage to help us, guide us to the future. So we will likely be looking into that, and that would be definitely a consideration for document storage.
I found in the vault, a substantial amount of, all of the old IT documentation on microfilm is like in a giant box in my vault, and at some point, we probably want to either decide if we want to keep that, should we convert it to a more acceptable digital format, and if so, how are we going to store that? So, would love to talk about that.
Is there a requirement to retain those materials?
Provided I know what's on there. So, yeah, currently, it's digital currently, so there's no retention schedule on that as it stands. It just would be interesting to find, I don't even know if it's, I have no idea what's in there.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
Okay. The other items on here, the other departments have covered for the most part, so I'm going to scan, go through those, or breeze through those. The public safety capital projects, Director Meyer has already covered, between the Fire Fund, the 911 Fund, and the Police Fund, so I'm going to breeze through that. This is the debt schedule as it currently stands today, so obviously, we're planning on issuing debt in 2020, that has not been worked into this slide at all. You can see that public safety currently does not have any debt on the books. The non-public safety governmental, we pay about $2 to $3 million a year. Our largest debt issue was going to be paid off fully in 2023, so that is a remaining debt on this building, on the Village Theater, and might just be those two renovations at this point in time. So in 2024, we're going to have about a $2 million swing as far as debt goes. Obviously, we're going to be adding some to, to this, but I'm comfortable that we're going to be able to absorb that. I do not anticipate our, the debt that we're going to issue is going to be as expensive as the $2 million a year at this point in time. The golf course debt, 2020 is the last year of that, so starting 2021, until we issue more debt.
Right.
It will be off the books.
Water and Sewer was the, the 2023 drop is the tower, the tank, or?
That, 2027 is actually when that's going to end, the Water and Sewer, on the, if you look at the bottom.
But there's a drop from in 2023 to 2024?
2020, the drop is part, a piece of the debt was refin, refunded, and a part of it could not be refunded, so we paid off some of the debt, and the piece that we couldn't get paid off does not expire until 2023, so yes, it's one debt issue that when we refinance the debt, a piece of it could be refinanced, a piece of it could not, so that, that's the piece that could not. Okay, the total revenues by fund, I'm not going to go through all of this at this point in time, but I am going to focus on the top four numbers on there, so the general fund, excuse me, the general fund's going up by $1.2 million, that's due to property, primarily due to property taxes going up by about $400,000 between '20 and '21. Permits going up by about $130,000, and statehood revenue up about $340,000. The roads fund, you'll notice, takes a drop from the $7.7 to $6 million, that's because we have the money from the county that we're expecting to come in in 2020, and we don't have any IGAs or anything that we're aware of yet for 2021 in the amounts that will be coming there. Fire fund, looks like it's dropping here, well, it is dropping, but it's down $1.9 million, but the 2020 revenue has the $2.5 million of debt that we're going to be issuing in there, so it's really not a drop per se. The property tax revenue is actually going to be up by about $750,000 between those two years. And the police fund here goes from 22.7 to 23.8, so about a $1.1 million increase, and that is due to property tax increase. The only other one I'm going to touch on, they're all pretty similar going down, is this Capital Project at Service Fund, that 1.381. That's about what we are anticipating when we issue the debt, what the debt payments are going to be come 2021. So that is actually just a transfer in from the applicable funds that are going to be paying that to cover the debt service expenses. Any questions on the revenues? Okay, on the expenditures, I, instead of showing a bunch of numbers, I thought trying to show them in a picture format might be a little bit helpful. So this first line starts from the actual expenditures from all of the funds, from 2016, 2017, 2018, the 19 amended budget, what we're looking at for 2020, and what we're looking at for 2021. So this is a percentage of the overall expenditures to the total expenditures by fund. So general fund, if you look at the general fund from, as a percentage of all total expenditures, the general fund's in the same ballpark, there was a little blip in '23, excuse me, in 18 to 23%, but overall, it's been hovering right around 19 to 20%. Public safety was about 21% in 2016, up to 26, and it's been hovering to 26, you know, the high 20s percent from 2017 through 2021. Summit and Golf, I commute, I combine those two funds, those are standard, have been, have been and will be at about a 5% of the total expenditures for the total township. Solid Waste, which is actually the garbage, garbage and rubbish, is 3%. Water and Sewer was about 33%, and that has dropped to about 25%. Again, that's because we got out of Wayne County, and those costs with Yucca are much cheaper. The capital, this is actually our Community Improvement Fund and our Capital Improvement Fund, the new one that we're creating, it's been about, you know, 12%, it's going to be 9% of the total in 2020 and 6% in 2021, just as a matter of the amount of capital that we're doing. And this other is, you know, 7 to 10%, that does include the roads fund, the roads millage fund. When you look at the actual expense comparison between '20 and 2021, again, you know, the general fund is about 20%, roads fund is 4%, the fire fund is about 12%, fire fund is 17% of the total proposed. Community Center, we just talked about, was 5%, 6% for Summit and the Capital Improvement Fund. Water and Sewer is $37 million, the garbage and rubbish collections is 3%, about $4.5 million, and fleet is just under $2 million. And this other, again, does includes the roads of, and that total is $7.4 million. And if you look at it this way, if you look at the 2021 increase or decrease in expenditures, the general fund is actually down by about $651,000 in '21. Roads fund is down 1.6, fire fund's up 1.9, police fund's up a million, community center's down 212, the capital that we're planning on doing in '21 is down about 5 and 1/2 million. Water and Sewer fund's up slightly, 165, as is the garbage and rubbish collections, and then the other minor funds that we have are up about $1.5 million, but that $1.5 million, 1.381 represents what we're anticipating the debt payments to be for the, for the debt that we issue. The next slide, again, I'm not going to go over this in detail, that's what the pictures were for, the pie charts, but this next one goes into what the fund balance looks like it's going to be at the end of 2021. So we take what we thought it was going to be at 2020 that we talked about earlier, add the 2021, all of the funds are still in a positive fund balance situation, so we're, that's a very positive story to tell there. With that, I'll take questions on the fund balance, if there are any questions, I flew through the expenses.
Neighborhood Stabilization still has 280, is that what that is, that's NSB?
This right here, this here. This is, this is, we have not completed our closeout yet for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. We are using those dollars for the park, right, at the Copernick, the new park that we're putting in, but because it hasn't been closed out yet, and we haven't, don't have the expenses charged in a budget yet, it's still showing there. That will be closed out by 20, by 2021, but because today, we still have it in fund balance, we have to show that moving forward.
Earmark for green space.
It's earmarked for the park, Copernick Park, yep, Copernick Park, Copernick Park. Okay, so with that, the only, oh, I had one more, where'd it go?
The tree fund, is that like, it's on a separate, it's on a separate fund?
The tree fund, the, the money that we collect for the tree gets recorded as a liability in the general fund, so it's not its own fund. We have a outstanding liability account of, I'd have to look into the dollar amount if you're interested in it, but we, but we record that as a liability, not in a, not in a fund, but it is segregated.
When we finish our suit with the Percy Brothers, let's get a little kick up. Significant kick up.
Significant kick up.
I think my last slide is gone, but at the, end it with a bang. You should have it in your packet, a historical fund balance, historical changes. Hopefully, you have that, I don't know why it's not showing up on my screen. But at the end of the day, we have always budgeted very conservatively. So when you take a look at the slide, and we have the amended budget, the first column on what you have in front of you shows the historical, what we've budgeted to use a fund balance, and what we actually have used a fund balance. And each of the last five years on our three main funds, our general fund, fire fund, and police fund, those have always ended up more favorable. So again, I do think this is the worst-case scenario. We did talk, it is actually gonna be down a little bit from where we said because of the murders that we're still gonna bring forth to the board to pay down some of our legacy costs. But at the end of the day, based on what we're showing for 2021, I do believe this is a worst-case scenario. With that, before I forget, I really wanna say thanks to everybody who's in this room, the board for their support in doing this budget, all of the departments. It's a big process to go through this entire budget. After they go through it, I go through it, and then I write, some departments more than others, pages of notes, just challenging them to look at it a little bit closer, to say, do we really need this? You know, can we reduce the budget here and there? And the departments are always open to discussions on it. So I'm really grateful for their patience as we go through this process, and grateful for the board, and really Carolyn, who I didn't introduce, who I think all of you have seen, spends a lot of time and hours doing this budget, balancing the funds, getting the people, costs adjusted, and it's a lot of work. So thank you to everybody here for all of your support in doing this budget. I know it's not fun, I know a two-plus-hour meeting talking about numbers isn't easy, so thanks for your attention. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any further questions?
Just a quick one. I'm always so surprised at the fund balance for water and sewer, and how high it is, and is that...
Water and sewer's done a little bit differently. Their accounting rules are a little different than the rest of the funds. They're treated as more of a business type. So their fund balance has all of their assets included in it.
Okay.
So when you take a look at the water mains, the water lines, the sewer lines, everything, that is...
Capital...
Right, that's a function of how many assets that they have.
Okay.
Yeah.
And as we build out going west, we probably could and should have a second tower, because that's not covered on the existing tower. Long-term thinking, longer term.
I have a question.
Sure.
Early on in the presentation, there was a comment about creating some new positions.
Correct.
The engineer and the inspector for MSD, and then another HR position. What's the process for establishing whether or not to add an individual? How's that, how does that go? I understand it eventually gets approval from the board trustees, but from an administrative standpoint, how does that work?
It begins with the director, sitting down with me during the one-on-one, discussing the need to give and take, the back and forth, the justification. The business case is generally worked out with Wendy. But first step is, director, myself, we sign a form that says, okay, we're interested in pursuing this. Then HR gets involved and engaged, does the same scrub process with the directors. And then, next step of the process goes to Wendy, and it's a discussion about budgeting and funding, and is there funds available to support? Or do things have to be moved around? And then, once all those hoops are jumped through, then it comes to the board for approval.
So historically, when it comes to the board, when it's not budget time and it comes to the board, we talk about, we're asking for an increase in staffing level. Here's the business need as to why it is important to the organization, why it's being requested, why it's important to the organization, whether it is gonna be an added cost, or if it's gonna be, something else is gonna be reduced. You know, in some cases, professional fees are gonna be reduced, and it's gonna help subsidize it. In other case, it's, you know, we have a need, we haven't filled a position for a number of years, and workload has gone up, so it's truly an added cost to the bottom line. In the case of the HR, there are no offsets, that's an added, that's an added cost. I don't have all of the support with me as to the needs. I know that that was, my understanding was that was discussed with the board at a previous study session, as to the workload and the needs of that organization. But in this situation right now, we would be asking, when the board adopts the budget, to increase the headcount. The resolution that goes before the board says that any increase in headcount does have to come before the board for approval, and that would be part of this resolution in 2020, should the board be willing to accept that.
So we'd be talking about this in November of next year.
This would be November...
Wait.
In four weeks.
Okay. Now, the engineer and the inspector, we talked, when we initially were talking about creating a roads program, we had talked about building in...
In the needs.
The cost. I mean, that's part of the reason why the language of the village was written the way that it was, to cover potentially paying for an additional engineer or somebody else.
Correct.
And then I remember when we added, leisure services added a position, there was discussion about programs that potentially could be paying for. You know, there was certain programmings that weren't being marketed perhaps, to the extent that they could have been, and that the increase in individuals participating in those might be an offset for the actual position itself. But there, so there is no offset for HR, but there is a case being made that isn't, from an organizational standpoint, that that's the best use of our funds, would be to create that position.
Correct. And at this point in time, the way that would be worked in, if this is how the board wants to proceed, is it would be part of the 2020 budget adoption process at the end of November to approve that. If you want it as a separate RBA completely with that meeting, we can certainly do it that way.
I mean, yeah. It's hard for me from a philosophical standpoint. I think part of it is that, you know, I've looked at potentially creating a full-time position in my department, and so what I've essentially looked at is, is there a service I can start providing that's gonna bring in some revenue, and are there some expenses I can decrease in a way that will offset that? And from a salary standpoint, you know, human beings, right, we typically give a, you know, become more costly as we continue on in the organization, so it's not like a simple one-off. So, it's just...
Well, I know part of the, part of the concern from an HR perspective is the amount, as you heard earlier, for staffing needs and the amount of applicants that are coming through for public safety, and they're not getting the needs, and they're, my understanding, and Director Meyer can probably speak to this, there are interviews happening a lot more frequently than they used to 10 years ago because of the applicants that are coming in, they're constantly interviewing. You know, from an HR perspective, from a finance perspective, from an IT perspective, those departments are never gonna be revenue generators. You're never gonna have costs that are gonna offset those items because we are in the customer service business for the rest of the township. So as the rest of the township's needs grow, you know, it's hard to sometimes operate with the same number of staff. One of the items that I kind of briefly mentioned was the self-insurance. So now that we're switched to a self-insurance, as far as medical costs go, that saved the township a significant amount of dollars. So even though that isn't going to necessarily, it's not gonna save the township more dollars today, but the fact that we switched to self-insurance and HR investigated that, and now I think we saved probably $300,000 to $400,000 a year by switching to self-insurance, at least that amount. You know, if you wanna try to compare something, the fact that HR's trying to look for other ways to save the township money, that was a big money saver for our township. Now, this position isn't gonna create more self-insurance, because that just depends really on the usage of health insurance. But HR and certain departments are really never, unless you've been paying an outside company to do some of this work, are never going to have money to offset. I can tell you, one of the employees at HR, who works in HR, probably works regularly 70 to 80 hours a week.
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
I agree.
And just, she has too much on her plate right now to get work done. And I think she even tries to hide how much she works by sending time delays on emails, so they don't come out at 2:00 in the morning, but they come in at 8:00 in the morning. So I do know there is some definitely, definite relief needed in HR. But as far as a, you know, the official business case, if that's something that you prefer to have separate and have Kieran come and speak at the board meeting, I'm sure she would be willing to do that as well.
I'd have to go back and look and see what was in her presentation that she made a couple months ago to that effect, I don't remember either way, so...
I'll pull it out and get it to you.
I mean, and in that meeting, I didn't, I thought it was like a kind of a wish or a hope, and I assumed it was going to be coming at some point. But, yeah. I, I'll tell you, the staffing levels on public safety concern me far greater than the staffing levels in human resources right now.
They're all important, every department. Leisure services, same thing.
I would also argue that the clerk's office is also important, but, you know, we're not...
But you are managing your department. With the resources that you have, and making data decisions, right?
I mean, if I'm the only one here who's got, you know, an issue with creating a new, a new position, it's just, this will be the second new position we've created since we've taken control of the board, and...
I think it might be appropriate, they have, maybe come to the board meeting.
We'll do that.
Okay.
It always is. If you have one you wanna bring forward, it would be as well, so...
It will be quite some time.
Okay.
But more than likely be involving passports, and, you know, which would be a substantial source of revenue and some other cost reductions. But we're doing, we're doing all right, you know. I was reading the minutes of the clerk's office from, because the previous clerk was very thorough, and she kept minutes of her internal staff meetings that rivaled some of the minutes of the actual board trustees meetings, believe it or not. But to see the staffing levels of the clerk's office in 2009, and see the staffing levels of the clerk's office today was very shocking. How many people were working in the clerk's office when we were servicing a substantially less amount of voters, the work itself, it was different. But technology was also different back then, too, right? So, it's just interesting. You know, you start talking about positions that were eliminated in 2010, 2011, 2012, start having a lot of departments coming to the board of trustees asking for positions. Tell you that right now.
Any additional comments? Say none? Any public? Any no public at the moment? Call for motion to adjourn. So moved. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done, everybody.
Thank you.